For the City of Sagatuck City Council Meeting for Monday, October 28th. If you could all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could call the roll.
Baldwin?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Muncie?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
You have a form.
Okay, as far as Mayor's comments tonight, I do want to start by recognizing the passing of former Sagatuck City Council member and Mayor Bill Hess. Bill served on council from 2012 to 2015, and he also served on the Sagatuck-Douglas History Center Board for several years where he received the Lorenz Award in 2011 for his volunteer leadership. No formal services will be planned, but donations in Bill's memory can be made to the History Center. A reminder, Veterans Day is coming up on November 11th, and of course, the event details are in our packet today. But just a reminder to everyone that there will be a ceremony at 10 o'clock in the morning at the park. Prior to that, the Sagatuck High School will be holding a breakfast at 8:30 in the morning for any local veterans and their families. So keep getting the word out to everybody about that. I know we're seeing it on social media. But if you know of any veterans that would like to go to the breakfast and attend the ceremony, you know, be sure to spread that word if you can. And a big thanks to the school and the American Legion for organizing those two events. Halloween festivities in town, fantastic weekend here in town, both in Sagatuck and Douglas. But here in town, it was great having the kids parade in town. I know the kids had a great time with that and the parents. The contest with the costumes at Wicks Park, the trick-or-treating, and all of the local businesses that got involved with decorating their businesses. It was really cool to see all of that. So a big, great job to April Gundy, as usual, for planning all of the Sagatuck activities and of course, the awesome festivities in Douglas as well. And then finally, just a great turnout for Thursday, this past Thursday. A number of folks from the Radar Hill Hiking Club, Riverwood Council, and members of our Parks and Public Works Committee and a number of us all got together, and we were all out at the airport property. It was a really great turnout. It was a beautiful day to go for a hike. And we got a fun history lesson on all of the things that used to be at the airport property between the snowmobile club, a senior center. Scott Herbert's not in the room, but he said his sister actually held her graduation open house out at that property. So it's been a lot of things over the years, but it was really fun to have everybody out there, and it was huge turnout. So we were really glad to spend a beautiful fall day out there when it was actually at its peak of perfection, to be able to see the beautiful stream that goes through there and the hiking trails and get our passionate hikers in town on board to see what a beautiful space that is. So that was fantastic. I will leave it to Ryan now.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. So just for, by way of updates, benches, you know, I think you've heard a few comments and a few requests that, that, you know, comments that you had a great, you know, new playground build, but you needed some benches. And so that work is complete. The pads were poured last week and the benches are installed. And myself, folks, we're sitting down and enjoying the day. So a lot of positive feedback on that already so far. Oval Beach, your Wi-Fi is now live. So the installers did some testing out there. They feel like we have some good signal strength, especially in those front lots and the beach area, that northern, you know, back lot where there's some dunes in the way, not as strong back there, but not unexpected, given the sightlines and that sort of thing. But a huge improvement as it relates to public safety and the ability for folks and more folks having the ability to at least do some Wi-Fi calling if there were an emergency. And then I checked with Sergeant Haas, who's here today as well, in case there's any questions on this. But he indicated that our dispatch center here in Allen County actually takes text messages to 911 as well. So that would be another safety option that's available.
Yes, quick question. So the 911 box remains live, correct?
Yep, yep, yep. That's all there too. Yep. As it relates to short-term rentals, you likely recall several months ago, you approved a short-term rental enforcement plan. And a piece of that plan was to work with a firm called Granicus to implement a short-term rental hotline that would be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So if folks have concerns related to short-term rentals, they could either call or hop online and make that complaint. That is now live as of last Thursday. So I put that information in your meeting packet. And then tomorrow, we're going to have some information going out to the community, letting folks know what that number is and what the link is. We'll put that on social media, email blast, you know, and start trying to get the word out there. And then as we kind of approach next season, we'll look at, you know, kind of doing some further education as we kind of get back more into season. Paving, a lot of asphalt is being repaired out there. Tomorrow, the engineers and Scott Herbert are going to do a walkthrough with the contractors to make sure that everything was done, you know, properly and see if there's any areas where we need to do some fixes. But otherwise, I think a lot of folks are happy to see some fresh asphalt out there. For this year, as you remember, last year, we had east-west tack and tailor and really focused on, you know, those roads in this area. This one was a little bit more spread out. And then the last piece I just wanted to touch on was the Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area. As you likely saw in your meeting packet, how Land Conservancy of West Michigan kind of put together an updated set of management recommendations. We have a master plan for that property, and we have some endowment funds set aside at the Howland, the Allen Community Foundation, but we can't access those funds without having that master plan updated. And so this was a key piece of that, and we worked with legal counsel to kind of look at, okay, what do we need to go through going forward to make sure that that plan is updated? So you'll be seeing a draft update of that master plan coming within the next couple of months or so to you with this information. But I just wanted to kind of get it to you ahead of times to kind of start, you know, looking through it and kind of look at what some of those recommendations were. So that's all I have today, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Any agenda changes, deletions? None at this time? Any guest speakers today? Okay, we will move on then to public comment on agenda items only. If anybody's in the room that wishes to come up and speak at the podium on agenda items only.
742 Pleasant Street, Madam Mayor and Council Members, I'm going to talk on 16B. I would like to just make sure that I'm on the right page. So if I'm going back over the things over the past couple of months, the original Outdoor Discovery Center proposal came out on May 8th. So I think that's where then this has been working off. The old one that we had on Wednesday with the red lines has now been changed to the new one, which does not have any red lines in it. And if I'm looking at that on page 75, the new language before it had about obligations. The new language on this one says, page 78, number one, grantee shall have the right, but not the obligation, to engage in conservation activities on the property, which may include, but not be limited to forestry management, invasive, and so on and so forth, including land improvements such as the overlook construction, shade structures, construction, non-motorized pathway, and so on. So if you're looking at that and it says it's not under the obligation anymore, they have no reason to do that. So I hope I'm reading it wrong, but what I'm seeing is that it is, they're off the hook for the main reasons that we had the proposal in the first place. And about the only thing that's left in this draft right now is to put in conservation easement. And again, if they're not going to be responsible for the conservation easement, the parking lot, all of that, that was the original proposal. I'm not sure why we need the conservation easement. And if I am accurate, you should pull this then because it's a gutted bill, and it's not the one that we've been discussing over the last several months. So you're actually putting out a new ordinance that people have not had any chance to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Kelly Roach, 413 Hoffman Street. I want to thank council for all of your hard work thus far, making important decisions to make Sagatuck a wonderful place to raise my family. I'm here to remind the public of the tremendous amount of work and process that has been followed to bring the Airport Park project to this point. The airport property has been listed in our five-year parks land as a park asset since 2002. That's over two decades of council leadership listing as such, yet our citizens have not had access to the land. PPW formed over two years ago, and this project has been on every agenda as we did our due diligence on this property to use it as its highest value. As City Manager Cummins has repeatedly laid out for us, this process included a Phase One environmental ecological evaluation from the Outdoor Discovery, sustainability evaluation, trail map overview, and in-person SOAR analysis to gather public feedback on how citizens would like the property to be used. Not one attendee suggested sale of the property, evaluating legal liability and ADA requirements for rustic trails, zoning inquiries, and alignment with DPW to make sure we're aligned with their staff. When donors stepped forward in Fall of 2023, a multitude of projects were shared, and they chose to do a generous endowment of $160,000 to cover all costs to open the Airport Park, including signage trails, parking, invasive and habitat management, and conservation. The PPW unanimously voted this forward, and council voted it forward with a 6-1 vote. Since that time, council has workshop the conservation easement with ODC leadership and attendance to answer any of their questions. The Old Growth Forest Network has toured it and is in favor of an Old Growth Forest designation, which less than 5% of forest lands hold in the United States. There have been many positive letters to the editor and the commercial record from the public and support. Sagatuck eighth graders were the first citizens officially invited to this new park to partner in a community service project to work on invasive species. And it's a stewardship that the school intends to continue. And finally, as Lauren mentioned, the Radar Hill Hiking Club invited citizens out for a fantastic hike last week. I'll add that the Airport Park is just one of an exciting effort by many local groups to connect our parks, rustic and non-motorized trails, waterways, and downtowns, including the school cross-country trails in the landfill, which I know you guys are discussing later tonight. This property significantly helps bring that goal to life. I applaud council for having the vision to protect this incredible public asset. You are creating a legacy for all who live here. I'd like to remind those who continue to resist the city's success. Our beautiful natural environment is truly what drives our tourist economy and brings people to live here. And this new park is a benefit for all who live, work, and visit Sagatuck. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Barry Johnson, resident of City of Sagatuck. Based on Chris Peterson's recital, that census is a substantially changed ordinance that the public probably hasn't had a chance to really delve into, that'd be really, I think, appropriate for you to table it tonight. Go through another workshop and bring it up again if it changes or not at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else in the audience?
Hi, John Vanderbeek with Riverwood Council. I commend your efforts, council people, to put the airport prop... Oh, wait, this is doing my notes or...
Take your time.
Anyway, I look forward to a future where we get to see what happens with this airport property. I think that there's some misunderstandings on how closed or open that the proposal is. And what's really cool is that next year, the year after, the decades after, we'll see proposals from people for what to do with the rest of the land, which is most of the land. And thank goodness, we're conserving the little bit of it that we can conserve that we really can't do much with anyway. So I commend your efforts to do that, to take a step in that right direction. The mood out there, as I see, overwhelming. People are disheartened by lots of development. But I see a future where we balance lots of development with lots of conservation. And so if some of you have noticed what's going on down in 135th Street and what's going on at the Pine Trail Camp, it's all being developed right now. And that's good, as long as we all develop our conservation and public assets too at the same time. And that's what you guys are doing. You're creating a balance during a time where Sagatuck is going through an unprecedented development surge. So thank you. And on behalf of Riverwood Council, Glenna and I and the other group members, we want to be here for you. Call us anytime, anytime you want anything beyond what we were already able to do, bringing in the $160,000. We're here for anything you want. So thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Mark Clungle, 747 Water Street, now you're in the city. My comment is also on the airport property. I questioned, last week I was trying to understand it better because the property is owned by City of Sagatuck. And then we have a donation by a different private party to support this development. And then we have the ODC over here that would be the receiver and is supposed to do the work. The, it's a great thing to do in my mind. I mean, put the trails in, trailhead. That's a great thing to do. The parking lot, in fact, the parking lot's there for the senior senator already. I mean, most of this stuff is already there. My question is, is the reviewing this easement makes no sense to me when I look at it. What you've got in the, basically, the pamphlets for today or your grouping today is totally different from what we were looking at on Wednesday. You've taken basically everything out. There's no responsibility for the ODC to do anything. Yet, I'm trying to understand how we're going to get there. Do we really need the ODC to do this? Because you can still do that, and it can remain a park of Sagatuck. There is no reason to give an easement that has nothing to it. We're just giving the rights of the property away in a conservation easement, and I dealt with a lot of conservation easements. They're not reversible. So you're giving away the property rights, and we're retaining the maintenance, we're retaining the liability, we have to insure it. So I just don't understand the reason for this easement when there's no obligation for them to do anything. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else?
Sheri DeHardy, 6608 North Street. You're moving way too fast on the airport property. I want to know who's going to maintain this? Because we were told that we would not be maintaining Blue Star, yet we've had several checks go up for the Blue Star Trail. So I want you to know that I am not in favor of having the City of Sagatuck on the hook to take care of any of problems that may arise having a tenant there, or whatever you call them, of the Outdoor Discovery Center. It's a great idea. Who's going to pay for it? Us? I don't think so.
Thanks, Sheri.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, anyone online with their hand raised? Don't see anyone, Jamie? All right. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's on, starting on page two. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Let's make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to Staff Reports, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, page 24. We'll start with the City Managers' Report, even though I know you went over a few things with your comments. Anything else you'd like to highlight?
Not in particular, Mayor, but I have to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for a City Manager? Okay, we'll move on to the Treasurers' Report. It's in your packet. I don't know if Nikki is around, but is there anything she wanted to highlight?
Nope, but if you have any questions, happy to take them back to her. She will be at your next workshop to go over Old Beach revenue and then kind of expenses and parks in Old Beach for the last several calendar years, including this year. And then she'll kind of have a quarterly, maybe plus a month, update as well.
Great. Go ahead.
Yeah, just one question. We should be seeing the audits, the audit, financial audit here shortly, right?
It's underway. It's been, I think, the trial balances, Plant Moran got them to the auditor a couple of weeks ago. So I know they've been going through several documents and haven't had any questions, at least since they've been going through things, so.
All right, when, what's our timeline in terms of when we can expect to see the draft of the audit?
Yeah, I think last year it came out in December, I think, is when ultimately, and it has to be done, so, yep.
Anything else? All right, moving on to the Clerk's Report. Jamie, anything to update, especially with early voting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we're just finished our third day of early voting, and it's been a huge success. We have had 373 people come in to vote between the township and the city. 53 of those voters are from the city. To put it in perspective, in the August primary, for the full nine days of voting, we had 119 people turn out. So we beat that in the first day with 145. So continue to tell people, early voting runs through 11/3. November 3rd, it's eight to four every day. It's voting, bring your ID, and we'd love to see you. Absentee ballots have been a success as well. We've issued 381 of them, and we have 77% of them back. So that's all I have for an update.
How many, Jamie?
We've set out 381.
Great. That's wonderful. Does it make your job easier then on Election Day?
Well, it gives an opportunity for people to vote if they're not here on Election Day, so that's what's most important. We always have a lot to do on Election Day, but we always love to see people come in and vote. So whenever you can, just, you know, we give you plenty of opportunity to, so.
Fantastic. All right, Jamie, any questions for Jamie? Okay, moving on to planning and zoning. Is Luke here, or does Luke have anything to highlight?
No, not, let's just question.
Anyone? Questions? All right, moving on to DPW. Anything there?
Other than brush and leaf pickup is going to be quite busy here the next several weeks. There's more and more leaves are starting to now fall. So just be patient with us there, but we'll be collecting, so.
Fantastic. Sheriff's Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start out with introducing your guys' newest deputy, Deputy Martin Kaminsky.
Hi, welcome.
Good to meet everybody. Just a little quick introduction. My name is Martin Kaminsky. I've been in law enforcement for approximately five years now. I've been with the Allen County Sheriff's Office for about a year. Prior to that, I served in both a large metropolitan area as well as a large county in South Carolina. So I come bring with me a lot of experience from all different facets of life, which seems to be kind of the case here in Sagatuck. Everyone coming from everywhere else to build this kind of community, so I'm happy to be here.
Yeah, where are you from originally?
I was born in Chicago, but I was raised most of my life in South Carolina, the Columbia area.
Yeah. Well, welcome, welcome to Michigan. Welcome to Allen County. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I understand you're fluent in Polish.
Yes, sir.
Might come in handy here sometime.
If we need a translator, I'll be around.
Where in Chicago?
I was born in the Cook County Hospital, but we lived in there for a year when I was just an infant, so I couldn't really tell you.
Okay, right. Spent about 18 years in Chicago, so love the city. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
All right.
The other thing I will point on is we had a busy weekend here last weekend. Mainly over here at one of the local establishments at Coral Gables. Friday night, there was a pretty serious incident involving a firearm with a couple of shots fired. That individual's been identified. Charges have been submitted to the prosecutor's office. So we'll wait and see what they come back with at that, but several charges are going to them in regards to that. Definitely, it seems like an isolated incident with that group, believed to be the same individual who may have brandished a gun there earlier this summer. So he has been trespassed, as well as another individual that was partaking in some of the activity down there. So just want to let you know about that. And I think the stuff from Saturday night was just some overflow from next door that came over. So nothing serious on that one, though.
Hey, that's pretty good, considering it's, you know, thousands of people were in town. So that's, you know, especially Saturday night when things were what they were, but Saturday went okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
Good. Does anyone have any questions?
No, but thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it and welcome. Okay, moving on to the Engineers' Report. Anything to highlight? All right, we will move on to Boards, Commissions, and Committees, the Fire District Administration Board, Dan.
Dan Fox, the Council Representative to the Fire District Administrative Board, reporting on our most recent meeting. Series of slides put up here. And I remind everybody here, and also people watching online, if they, that all of this data and all of these charts and whatever are available on the Fire District website and a good deal more. So you're welcome to come spend an afternoon going, or not come spend it, just spend it at home, going through all these things as we do. The first one, back it up one, would you, Jamie? It's not just the titles. I've taken it upon myself to be the one that gets to choose which photograph from the Fire District we're going to throw up here as the first photograph. This is Kyle Meyer, Lieutenant, one of the, one of the officers, fire officers. One of the highest number of responses made is by Kyle, not the highest, but he's been the highest in the past. Over the past, whatever it was, eight or, I think, eight days ago, and a battery explode on the aerial platform, the largest of the apparatus. He was, he does maintenance work on these vehicles as well. He was near it at the time, and he's literally lucky. I mean, when a battery explodes, it's not a, it's a very loud noise. He's lucky to have escaped with no hearing loss, which he was tested for afterward. Anyway, he's a model first responder, so that's Kyle. Okay, now you can switch. Here's the incident report or top line dashboard report for the latest month for September. 85 calls, up four calls from the prior month, on track, running on track to be up 20% year to year, which is resource challenged, to say the least. As you see, their response times are up a bit from the prior month. And I, in case you, I mean, you can see, if there's another chart in here, that'll show you the response times month to month. And you can see they bounce around a little bit. That's because, they bounce around because the calls are not the same calls every month. And if there were more calls in the township or in certain parts of the township, those response times just are, just are up. Chief considers this well within the bounds of what's, should be considered normal and responsive, so. Next one, please, Jamie. This is the, just a quick graph on the 20% year to year. So we were running for two years, almost identical, and 24 is up. So you have a one frame of reference. Of those calls, the township accounts for 45% of them. This now, just for 2024. Douglas accounts for 32% of them, and Sagatuck City for 23% of them. Next one, Jamie, please. Here are the emergency responses, number of responses over time. There's any dramatic learning over there other than that expectation of it being up 20% this year. And again, the response times by month, and you can see there's a lot of, there's a lot of movement up and down both ways on those, on the response times. They are, on an average basis, those are considered pretty, pretty impressive numbers. A lot of those, obviously, that's a, that's an average, so there are times well below that. So if you're close to the fire station, it's a little faster. Next one, please, Jamie. And actually, at bottom, one of the slides earlier, if nobody read the mice type, but it said the life ambulance numbers had not yet been submitted. Well, they were submitted after we had started to assemble this report, and Jamie was nice enough, once we got them, to be, to add them back into the, or add them into the, this series of visuals. And you can see, it's incomplete data, incomplete, not from life, because we have all their data from when they started in June with the Fire District, but incomplete from AMR, the prior contractor that we had before that. You can see the response times, and I'll show you another chart on those. Again, those, those are, and I'll show you the chart that gives some idea of the standard, are within the county-established standard for response time. Next one, Jamie. This is a portion of the report for Sagatuck for September. So those are where the calls took place. Couple there to the right are in the township, but majority of what you see there, we had cut the map off intentionally. Our Sagatuck, the green dots are the lowest of three priorities, yellow dots of which there are none, I think. The middle one, and the red is the highest priority, priority one.
Oh, so Dana, red-green means?
Red-green means that... Red-green means that unless I'm mistaken, and I don't think I am, I know who, where that call was, the, those are two calls.
Okay.
One of each kind.
Got it, thanks.
Next one, Jamie, please. And this last one, some of the data is pretty small, I grant you, but it gives you an idea of, you see the overall compliance number there, ninety-four percent. That's compliance with the guide for, this county guide for acceptable or desirable response time for the given three priority, three priority calls, so. Next one, please, Jamie. Uh, and next to last here, I just, I think we've talked about this before, but it's, I think it's a good, in general, it's a good reminder of how the, how the district, Fire District is different from the, from the, uh, from the city. Uh, and you see there, the blue bar is the city, the orange bar township, the gray bar is Douglas. And the revenue, that's the Fire District's revenue is presented there, and you see the township contributes roughly half of the Fire District budget. The census, Sawtooth, the lowest of the three, township, again, the highest of the three, unexpectedly. And call volume runs, you know, about, generally speaking, similar to those, those ratios. Not not identical, but you don't expect it to be identical, so. Uh, lastly, just a quick few updates. He was Sergeant Haas, you mentioned it in your, in your written report, the meeting on parade safety, which the chief was at as well. I was not there, I didn't intend to be. But was considered, at least by the Fire District, as as constructive, uh, very constructive. In particular, as it relates to ideally getting city agreement to have parades limited, with the exception of two parades. The high school, homecoming, or whatever it is, the parade that goes on, and Fourth of July, go all kind of all, but the rest of them be held exclusively on Butler. The reason for that, it's a number of reasons, but the key reason for that from a public safety standpoint is it limits the exposure of people in the crowd and people in the parade to any number of potential, and we've seen them happen, sorts of assaults on innocent people, so by by having a shorter parade route and a controlled one, not unlike Douglas does with the with the Halloween parade, where it's Center Street. If you, I don't know if, I didn't go this year, but if you went, all of those cross streets are blocked. And they're blocked, in in Douglas's case, by uh, DPW equipment, dump trucks, front-end loaders, actual physical barriers and what have you. So the le, the fewer number of such places to block, the easier it is to put things in place and get them out of place. And again, you reduce, reduce exposure, so that was a big deal. And and as I say, appreciated, and I guess, as I understood it, city's gonna take a look at acquiring any of the, there are less than three different types of barriers, and they have dramatic cost differences between and among them, so. Some things there, if you, if you want to see the most effective, go to the, uh, what's considered the most spec, uh, the most effective. Go to the farmer's market in Holland. And they're amazing things, they're only about this wide, but they're on wheels, so they're easily movable when you intend to move them. If a vehicle hits them, it tips up, and it's the end of the vehicle, it will not move past, those are called archer barriers. Those, those are the most expensive of the bunch. You know, hopefully, we can figure out some way, maybe between cities, shared budgets, I don't know what, but shared, those are easiest to transport as well. The, uh, one of the other ones being considered, we know is the, are the, the polystyrene plastic, probably seen them, just orange, that are filled with water. But obviously, that means you have to fill them with water, and you have to empty the water out before you can move them, because they're heavy when the water's in there. And filling them up requires Fire District resources and personnel, which is something of an issue, but anyway. I would say, based on what I've heard, what they told me, that was an excellent meeting and good progress, so. Cost recovery for the Fire District for the month was uh, over sixty-five hundred dollars. Fifty-four hundred of it related to the incident where the truck ended up in the river over in Douglas, which is gratifying, because it, there were a ton of resources on involved in that. So that got put back on the right side. Just an FYI, the Fire District's collective bargaining agreement, it's discussion between the district and the the union representatives is continues going forward, and and seemingly, and I'm on that group, seemingly without significant snags or issues. And finally, the TMA truck uh, has been acquired, there it is with all of its equipment on, it's, all of its original equipment on. It's, it's uh, either here or headed back here. The thing over the cab is where the barrels will go, the big yellow-orange barrels. And the, the item on the back, as I was asked, is that what they call the attenuator. When employed, it goes up, down, and out, and it creates a uh, a sort of a spring-loaded barrier for anything hitting that truck from behind. Truck is also, truck bed is reinforced, so it's much heavier than it appears if you just look at it. And the reason for that truck, uh, which we've discussed before, and that's that last picture I sent you, if you got it. This was over the weekend. That's a, that's a car fire on one ninety-six, as you can see, pretty much a, a total loss. That's a hot fire, big fire, and Chief Janet told me, he was, he was, to the far side, as you look at the car, sitting in the front seat of the blocking truck, the TMA truck has not been set up yet with lights and all the rest of it. So they were using a, one of the, whatever it is, four, five, thirty-five hundred gallon tankers as one of the block, as the blocker. And he said, literally, I was saying prayers. He said, cars were going by at seventy miles an hour, this far from the door on our, on our truck. And he said, this is not how I want to die. And that's how scary it is out there, and I have a lot of empathy for that. I've had, but a couple of old cars would routinely leave me at the side of the road, one place or another. And if you've ever stood by the side of the road, and I'm not even, not even that close, I mean, here to the, and the cars go by, you realize what seventy miles an hour from that perspective, perspective looks a great deal different than it does from the front seat of an automobile. And then you factor in somebody texting there, and it's just a recipe for disaster, so. The, we're very pleased that the, the district is sort of pleased with itself that we authorized and and acquired that vehicle, and it'll probably get, I mean, this is that, that call, I've said this in this meeting room before. That call, car accident or car fire on one ninety-six, is the most feared call by the first responders because of the risks from cars, not they don't mind putting out the fire or extracting people, they're, they're good for that, it's just so anyway, that's it, any questions, any comments?
Anyone with any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
All right, we'll move on to the inner urban board, go ahead, Gregory.
Um, yeah, we, um, on Halloween, uh, we carried one thousand five hundred and sixty-five riders with our free shuttle services, and it was very successful. At one point, I was here about quarter past nine, nine-thirty, and the buildup was building here. We had all these parade people going down about a block, right? And and we were that close to ten o'clock, so I gave Becky a call, and we got three inner urbans over here, three buses in just a few minutes, and was able to get all the parade goers from Sawtooth there in time, so hope everybody had a great time with that. We just ended our fiscal year, starting our new fiscal year, and so we're extending our operating hours. We're gonna give everybody an extra hour throughout the week, Monday through Friday, from November through February. We'll be open seven AM to seven PM, will be closed Labor Day. We are having a little change in our, in our fees this year. We are going to be charging three dollars for rides between our late-night rides, when we get into the summer during the seven to eleven PM. Every, all, all the other charges will remain the same, it'll be a dollar fifty cents. But because you've seen how we've extended the hours the last two years, last year especially, um, so we're trying to make up for some of that. So I, I don't think, uh, I don't think that's too hard of a ask. We haven't raised prices in a long, long time, so that'll just be, that'll be three dollars from seven PM till eleven PM. Those hours that were open, and those are during the summer. We're gonna have, as we get into the summer, the June two thousand and sixteen, uh, we will be starting up that, those early-late hours again. Again, it'll be Monday through Thursday, um, seven to seven, Friday, seven to eleven PM, seven AM to eleven PM, and Saturday, nine AM to eleven PM, and Sunday, nine AM to seven PM. So we, we're also extending our Sunday night, um, uh, Sunday night buses for a short time, or, I mean, for a longer time. We'll be open on Sundays until uh, seven, uh, seven PM, um, and we'll be doing that uh, through, uh, through the season. So we're, we're open just a little bit later, and just up, up until November, then our Sunday rides will go from nine AM to four PM. And that's just through February, then we'll be back to going that extra hour on Sundays as well. Want to remind everybody that we have our weekly trip, Holland, every Tuesday, that leaves Sawtooth in Sunday at nine fifteen AM. We get a lot of riders that like to go into Holland, go see a doctor, go get a prescription, um, and maybe some things they can't get here in town. And, uh, and it leaves Holland at ten AM, and, uh, and it stays in the, it comes back to, stays in Sawtooth, Douglas, till about one fifteen PM. Uh, we've got the limited prescription delivery, I want to remind everybody that, that's only two dollars, if you don't know that. And we've also had the takeout food delivery service for three dollars. So there's your Uber Eats. You just, you just give the restaurant your call, your credit card, you put in your order, and you give us your call, and we'll pick it up for you, bring it right to you. So, um, also, Becky is working with, um, uh, Alleghen County Transportation, and possibly we might have a, a, maybe one or two-week service, talking about going to South Haven Myers, uh, where we'd be picking, or, I'm sorry, that'd be Van Buren Bus System, where they'd be picking our riders up in Glen and taking people down there, and she's continuing the conversation with, including Fenville as maybe a regular, a regular route, uh, maybe perhaps starting next year. So we're still working with Fenville to try to reach out there too, as well.
Great. Any questions for, for Gregory?
Great.
No, thank you. Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority, Mr. Barry Johnson.
Barry Johnson, you're one of your two representatives for the city of Cal Lake and the current chairman. Uh, let's see, we had a meeting on October twenty-first. Are you getting, are you getting the packets, are you getting a copy of the packets?
Yep, and I forward those on to the council.
Good, good, and I don't know if they pass them on to these guys, but, because I'm kind of gonna repeat, uh, what you might already have, but the, uh, the well, one of the wells in Douglas is, has an iron removal plant, we got our discharge permit for the filter backwash on that. The report for the two thousand twenty-four residential sampling for lead and copper was submitted. Also updated was the expansion of the lead and copper sampling pool of residential homes. The sampling pool of residential homes must meet at a, uh, Eagle, which is the environment, Great Lakes, and energy for Michigan, and the EPA criteria of a leaded service line. The sampling pool represents a worst-case scenario for homes in our water system with leaded services. The two thousand twenty-four residential lead and copper sampling result is anticipated to be statistically less than in two thousand twenty-three, or three parts per billion of lead. You know, and this is important to us, because we have lead service lines in the city, you know, and especially up on the hill, so. Uh, there were no lead samples that exceeded four parts per billion in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the statistical value is determined by Eagle, uh, and reported as the ninetieth percentile. Probably Scott Dean can explain that better than me, so. It is the statistical value of the ninety percent, which requires corrective actions. If exceeded, the water system has been under regulatory corrective actions since nineteen sixty-seven. The water system's ninetieth percentile has been under four parts per billion since two thousand and eleven. With several years of non-detectable values, even after the EPA's not two thousand and nineteen sampling protocol changed, whereas the number of samples doubled. So that's just kind of an update, and I know you're on top of it, and I know you're right on top of it, so, now, Scott, you know a lot about that, you know?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, congratulations to the team for doing an excellent job of corrosion control. Four parts per billion is well below the current state standard of fifteen parts per billion. That standard's gonna become stricter next year at twelve, so you guys are still in really good shape, and that's even well below the upcoming EPA rules that will be rolled out nationwide over the next several years, so congratulations to the team on doing an excellent job on corrosion control.
Yeah, and I get, and again, appreciate all you guys, but Scott's expertise is really good to have with, on this team, and so I appreciate that, Scott, so. We've got some really old infrastructure, and and our wells, uh, the city has two wells out on Maple Street. And the SCADA system, which I had to ask, what's SCADA stand for? It's the thing that sends information back to the facility, supervisory controls and data acquisition. And we actually put in, it's very vulnerable, uh, somebody could hack into something if we weren't independent of the internet. And like they, uh, they shut down the water system in Atlanta during the, uh, during the Olympics down there, somebody hacked into that. And so we actually put a big radio tower out at the Cal Lake facility, and all the SCADA systems communicate via radio, not the internet. Or the phone system, uh, to keep, you know, tell someone something's breaking down, something's not moving. And, uh, but, you know, we're talking about nineteen fifty's technology we're working with here, and we've been doing this a long time. Uh, into the nineteen nineties, intermittent repairs and bypasses, uh, our city wells in Sawtooth, uh, circa nineteen seventies. The electrical work there is old stuff, so we're looking at updating all that. Uh, we had underground utilities between the two wells, we kind of lost that, so we're looking at doing that, and it may cost us significant money to update that system to send things back from our city wells here. We're anticipating eleven to thirteen video cameras, uh, we actually had some homeless persons staying in one of the wells in the township. So we got to get cameras in there to make sure people aren't messing around in there. And, uh, so we're gonna initiate a design and build contract with Parkway Electric to, uh, but it's a legacy problem. And, you know, we're all dealing with it, the city of Sawtooth's dealing with it. And, uh, and that's kind of, you know, why you see all those patches in the cement, is we've been po- potholing to get down to identify, you know, selected places, so all those new patches all over town is a direct result of this trying to find where there are lead services, so, uh, everybody's being proactive on it, but we got to do it, you know? Uh, our generator project is complete, uh, one of the lift stations, particularly out at Clearbrook, uh, when we would have problems that break down, uh, and power goes out, generator's got to kick on, keep stuff moving. And, uh, uh, originally, it was kind of very unreliable system, it was diesel-fueled, so then you got a big diesel truck, uh, you know, filling up things out there. So we got a new generator for hundreds of thousands of dollars, took two years to get it, and it's now running off of natural gas. So when that lift station goes out, it's gonna keep running, so. Uh, let's see, lead and copper, we talked about that, interesting little thing in the city here up at five eighty-six Mason Street. Uh, we got a call in that there's a water leak, well, it's a, I believe it's that house that they lifted up and put a basement up on Mason Street, Upper Mason, and, uh, the contractor dumped, uh, put the dumpster right on top of the water, shut off, jammed that thing in the ground, and now we got a water leak. So, and Ryan certainly is aware of this, because the contractor's got to pay, and then you got to work it out with, with you guys, so. Talk about the potholing and all that, we, uh, we've been saving up at Cal Lake for about two or three years to get To get a new vector truck and that's the thing that we do, the hydro excavating. Uh, we use it for check cleaning, sewer station, vacuum cleaner, water main break, hydro excavation and water service repairs. And again, we've been budgeting in the capital improvement fund. It's about five hundred eight thousand dollars. Uh, but we are up to date on that. And then a lot of people want to buy our old ones. So finding used ones is almost impossible. Not only. Smaller municipalities, but, uh, a big plumber would love to have that to do hydro expedings. So. So our new combo cleaning sewer truck, that's the pride and joy. And then finally, uh, you know, very small staff at Cal Lake. We've got our operator. We've got two people in the office and then of course you've got your team that's out fixing things and jumping in the hole. But with the, uh, with the new agreement that we're all working together on the sewer and water agreements. Uh, it's going to expand the, uh, Cal Lake responsibilities and liabilities. So we see the need to hire more staff. So we need to get somebody in there. Let Daryl operate the system, have somebody should work with Ryan. I mean, you know, feed it in, we'll go, it'll help us get answers back to you guys faster. And, uh, so we're looking at doing that. Now, the crazy thing is trying somebody to do it because as we found out, uh. Chefs in town are making fifty thousand dollars annually. Uh, if you want to be a manager of Burger King, you can make sixty thousand bucks. So to find administrator, uh, that's going to have this expertise, uh, to run an office, but also understand the utility that we. We work with is going to be interesting. And I'm saying it's going to cost more than a Burger King guy. So. So we're working through that. We're looking at that and. And, you know, in addition, we got to find the right person. It'd probably take them a couple of years to get trained in the nuances of water and sewer systems. So. Look for us to get more staff and help you out more.
Any questions for Barry?
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Appreciate it. Uh, Harbor Authority, uh, anything to update us on Ryan, on the Harbor Authority?
No, I intend they'll schedule us, I think, probably a special meeting soon. I think you probably saw the note to my manager's report that they're, uh, interested in kind of hiring a consultant to, to help them through the next year and have some support for their board and, and look at, uh. Uh, some dredging opportunities and, uh, so, uh, anticipate them getting together soon to, uh, kind of maybe make a formal request to each of the municipalities to help fund that. Because they don't have a funding mechanism right now. So they may be coming forth with some consultant, uh, funding requests soon.
Yeah, and as far as filling Logan's position on the Harbor Authority, I just wanted to wait until after the election to see who would be around to be able to serve out a, a term with that. So we'll be waiting until after the election to fill Logan's spot on the Harbor Authority. So just so you're aware of that. Uh, zoning board of appeals, anything?
Nope.
They, nope.
Okay, historic district, Russ?
Next meeting is Thursday, November seventh at six P M.
Okay. Uh, planning commission, right over to you. Yeah, I know. It's like.
I think you can say when the next meeting is, I think, is there's not, I don't like.
Okay, well, yeah, the meeting was canceled. Was there, um, so rescheduled or when does it?
There's an email circulating about, uh, rescheduling it in early December.
Okay, all right. Early December, we'll look for that. Okay, thanks you guys. Uh, Parks and Public Works Committee.
We've covered all the good stuff with the manager's report, park benches and all the good, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail Study Committee, Scott.
Um, it's in the manager's report, but I do want to flag that, um, unfortunately, we did not receive a grant for the proposed traffic signal. So, uh, we'll have to go back to the drawing board on that one and, um, we'll look at next steps on that.
Okay, all right. Any questions on that? Uh, moving on to the Water System Operations Contract Advisory Committee, uh, Russ Helen.
Yeah, we, go ahead, Ellen, please.
As far as I know, we're waiting to look at the Red Land Agreement in, uh, next three weeks.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh, Wildlife Management Committee, back at you, Scott.
Yeah, we'll have our first meeting, um, next month.
Okay. Great. Uh, moving on to approval of accounts payable. It's on page sixty-seven in your packet. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, uh, make a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to mention, a lot of this is property tax collection and asked through, so.
One point five million of that, yeah.
All right, anyone else? Uh, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes. All right, we have no public hearings, no unfinished business, no new business. Is that in the right order?
No.
We have two, we have two, we have two new businesses, fourteen and sixteen.
Comment is in the wrong spot too, I think.
Yeah, I just noticed that.
Jamie, do you need us to make a motion?
No unfinished business, will we go to new business and public comment then?
We didn't make an agenda change earlier. How do you want us to handle this?
That's okay.
All right, so we'll plan on doing public comment after new business. All right, so we are on to item sixteen A. Um, it's a proposal for our water and sewer rate studies. It is on page sixty-nine of your packet. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you, uh, we discussed this at your workshop meeting on, uh, October ninth, um, with. With, uh, Mr. Campbell. Like I said, I don't know if he's able, has been able to make it tonight. He had another meeting. He was going to try to hop on if he, you know, if that meeting ended, I've not seen him pop up. But, uh, essentially we talked about at that, uh, at your, your last workshop meeting that, uh, this would, um, kind of update your most recent, uh, water related study that, uh. That provided the recommendation for the water infrastructure charge. Um, we, we need to, you know, kind of further update that as relates to this agreement with, uh, Cal Lake and, and anticipation that certain assets are, are likely to transfer to, uh, to Cal Lake. And be common assets and some of them will remain local assets, but then with a potentially new kind of way of accounting for, uh, repairs. We, uh, may need to, uh, you know, gather enough funds to not just fund replacements, but also those repairs. So. Um, Andy's willing to include that, uh, within the amount that we were already going to be charged anyway. That really big utility never ended up billing us for the work last year. So we're kind of getting some updates there. Um, for the same price. Uh, and then on the sewer side of things, so we're kind of in a similar boat that we were with water in that, um, you know, we haven't looked at. We'll need to be looking at eventual replacement of our sewer infrastructure. Uh, and we don't have a, a set, you know, funding mechanism for that. Uh, so we want to kind of take a look at, you know, where we're at, what our future needs are and, and start planning for that. Uh, and then along with that, our, our water and sewer connection fees haven't been updated since the mid nineties. And so we're, we're well overdue to, to take a look at those, uh, water sewer connection fees. And so all of that will be done. Uh, once the water and sewer operations agreements are, are across the finish line and updated, uh, this will help us with that next step to make sure that we have funding. Uh, or at least evaluate funding options going forward, I should say.
All right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the proposal from Bendinsky and Company Municipal Finance Advisors in the amount of twenty-one thousand for water and sewer rate studies.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, no discussion, just, uh, we've had a chance to work with Mr. Campbell now, um, a little bit in more in depth than the presentation to council. I feel very confident his abilities and experience with this as well as the staff that, I forget her name, but that has working with him. So I, I feel very confident that he's going to be able to provide what the city needs to make a good decision on this.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to items sixteen B. The conservation easement between the city and outdoor discovery center for the eastern portion of the old airport property. It's on page seventy-five in your packet. Go ahead, Ryan.
All right, so, um, you know, as the council, uh, you know, certainly, I assume recalls, you know, back in, um. March and May, uh, we discussed a, a proposal from the outdoor discovery center that, uh, included, um, uh, preparation of, of a conservation easement for a portion of the, the airport property. And so at that time, the council had a discussion about whether or not there was, uh, interest in potentially conserving, uh, a, a portion of that property. Uh, in perpetuity essentially. And so as part of that, uh, proposal that you, uh, approved, knowing that, uh, a donor had come forward and, and, and provided the funding for the proposal. Um, the outdoor discovery center is, you know, worked with their legal, did some survey work, uh, and prepared a draft of a conservation easement. So that was discussed with you at your, uh, well, first staff reviewed it and had some, some kind of red lines and things that we thought, uh, should, you know, at least an initial review should be changed. We brought that to you at your workshop meeting on October ninth. Based on that discussion that you had at, at that time, we, we took your feedback, the questions that you had and, and tried to incorporate those things into a, uh, another draft. Um, so staff and the O D C kind of had some further, uh, discussions about that language. And then we workshopped with you at your meeting last week, uh, a, a few items that still were, uh, kind of points of. Of, um, I would say disagreement, but points that we needed to work through with the council and the O D C still. Um, and so you, um, reviewed those points at your last meeting. They included. Some language related to whether or not there should be some sort of annual reporting. Uh, and then there was some concern from the O D C about some language that, uh, essentially indicated that, uh, the city could terminate the easement. Within a period of ninety days, um, if, if, you know, the requirements of easement weren't being maintained. And so the O D C, uh, at your last meeting expressed, um, some concerns with. Um, that language and kind of explained that this is not the type of conservation that's, that's being set up in the sense of. You know, we have an, a set, you know, endowment fund or some sort of dedicated funds that are going to be accessed to, um, you know. Do certain, uh, activities or conservation activities as, as the agreement outlines. Um, you know, for many, many years where they would necessarily have some sort of specific reporting requirements or, and they were concerned that. You know, if they weren't performing certain activities and the council thought they were supposed to be doing something that that could be used as a mechanism to terminate the easement, even though, um. They weren't committing to doing anything in particular upfront because it wasn't a dedicated funding source. So. The agreement that's before you this evening, as I, I highlighted in my memo, some, you know, some of the changes that we've had since then. Essentially, our legal counsel got together with the O D C legal counsel and discussed those concerns and, and came up with language, uh, to bring forth for you this evening to, uh, consider. Um, essentially clarifying what the O D C said last Wednesday and that, um, you know. They may engage in conservation activities. This easement gives them that ability, but it's not obligating them to do anything in particular. Certainly the land is then, you know, it's going to be an easement. It has to be conserve, but it's not committing them to doing, uh, a particular activity. Because there's not a funding source identified at this point in time. Certainly that doesn't mean that the O D C is not going to, or that the, the city later on couldn't, uh, choose to work with them to, you know, fund a proposal or fund some sort of activities or. Set up an endowment fund, you know, later down the road. Those are all options that, that still would remain on the table, but it clarifies that, um, discussion that occurred at your, your workshop meeting, um, last week. Um, the language is also, um, updated to essentially kind of clarify that, you know, uh, as, as your legal counsel said at your last meeting, we're not looking to just, you know. Terminate, uh, this agreement without some sort of cause and we don't anticipate that a future council is trying to do that either. Um, so some language was added to kind of say, look, we're looking at a material breach of the ease, but not looking at this for any sort of reason that, that this would be, uh, terminated. And then, uh, lengthen that period of time to say that, you know, a hundred and eighty days, uh, notice of a cure period really would have to be given. And before you really got to the point of actually terminating the easement. So really, essentially the city has to act in good faith, bring the forth the concerns, give a, you know, uh, a reasonable period of time to. Um, you know, cure any particular issues if, uh, if they were to arise before you could get to the point of saying, we're actually going to, to terminate the easement. So those are the changes since your, your last meeting and, um, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, we have a lengthy discussion about this at the workshop, but now that this language has changed, um, are there questions?
I mean, let's just, um, start with just, um, terminology. Um, there were comments made earlier that this was a changed bill or a changed ordinance. This is indeed a conservation easement, is it not?
It's still, yes, a conservation easement.
Okay, it's not a bill. It's not an ordinance. Okay, thank you.
And go ahead.
So, and I think it's, um, you know, Ryan was just talking about and, um, as Travis was speaking when he was here. The difference between this easement and something that the land conservancy would do is that they would, you know, dedicate a money that would. You know, provide for that essentially. And maybe I'm, I, I think I'm interpreting this correct. What we're doing, what this agreement does through the donation that we got is, um, earmark that land for conservation. And instead of us conserving, I mean, so the city would be saying, yep, we want to conserve this land. It's got. You know, high ecological habitat values that we want to preserve in perpetuity. Um, and rather than us year to year kind of minding that, they will do that. If there is a need to invest in that, that's something that we would talk about with them. The Parks Committee, I believe, has a million dollars of fund. So I would assume, you know, if at some point. We needed to tap money, it's not like, and that's dedicated parks money. We can't use it for, you know, lead pipes or anything else. So I, um, and this agreement is quite similar to the one we reviewed. The one we reviewed a couple of weeks ago then evolved into what we saw Wednesday. So this is not a dramatically different.
I, I would add on to that too, is that the O D C is here to do conservation. The, the changes in the, in the, um, in the easement were to reflect our coming together on what we needed from them. If we decided we wanted to do something, say we wanted to address erosion or something on the property that we saw. We wanted to be able to do that. And if they weren't willing to do it, then we could do it. Or, you know, it's, it's also is like dispute resolution, a hundred and eighty days versus ninety days we proposed. This is just coming together. Um, of two parties working in good faith, uh, for a conservation easement, and I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, second to last paragraph on page two, uh, also seventy-nine in the packet. Um, it addresses my concern from, uh, going over this, uh, easement last Wednesday. It's got, you know, basically the mechanism for dispute resolution, you know, good faith consultation, written notes, explanations, such breach. At least one hundred and eighty days, you know, written notes. So it looks like that's not addressed.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just, um, point back to, um, the discussion we had last Wednesday, which I thought was great. We had a really good, I know, con- con- or, um, Congressman. Councilmember Muncie wasn't here for the meeting, but it was the first opportunity that I think we really had as a council to really dive into this with some detail. And I appreciate Dave from the O D C being here to answer some questions. Um, I did point out that the original proposal from the O D C in bullet five, which was up on the screen earlier. Potentially placed a conservation easement over a portion of the property and it's been defined as about forty-four acres or so, about twenty-five percent of the total land that the city owns. Um, uh, my question is, at this point, what if we were to decide to not put a conservation easement in? What, what impact would that have with that? Because it was made, a comment was made earlier about if you have someone who's the O D C, for instance, who's already begun. I think the process of putting the trails in and the other things that were in the proposal. What does a conservation easement add to that at this point? Um, you know, the city, it, to my, to my, to my question at, at last Wednesday's workshop is I still have some questions about ambiguity in the agreement about who's responsible for what, when. And two is that the city does seem to be in a position where it's going to be responsible for maintenance costs over the course of this perpetual easement. Um, and the city has many responsibilities within its city limits that I think we need to be focused on first. As opposed to a property that's not even in the city limits. Um, so those questions remain. Uh, it's one of the reasons why I voted no in the first place because I, I still think this is an issue. An agreement in perpetuity is exactly that. It's in perpetuity and it doesn't go away. So if something were to, you know, there's dispute resolution language in there and so forth, but. Um, as Mr. or Dave said from the O D C, it's in perpetuity. I mean, there's no turning back. The property potentially, well, it's locked up. Um, it can potentially lose some value as compared to the property that's left for the city to be able to look at what it's going to do with it. Um, and I would say that, you know, despite everybody's the best efforts and I appreciate everybody that's been involved because this has been a really interesting project to watch. Is that I don't know that this is the best use. I don't think that project was ever doing that. And I know several people have made comments over the past several months about. Kind of stepping back and saying, okay, what is exactly the best use for the property? I know there's a phase one that was done and an ecological evaluation, sustainability valuation. Those are all done. But what was never completed was to step back and say, what's the true value of this property? I've heard a number of different figures, one point three million to two point two million dollars. There's all different kinds of figures out there. And it's an asset of the city and I still remain, um, opposed to the conservation easement because I really think it locks the city down to something that may not necessarily want to be locked down into.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, just to address some, some of what, um, Mr. Gardner said. So, uh, in terms of maintenance, first of all, um, I mean, that would really be the trails and, um, and so I know that, um, P P W asked Mr. Herbert. And he, you know, likened it to the Woolham Trail. So I think the lift on, um, city, you know, city staff is pretty minor. Uh, and I think Scott, you know, he's a straight shooter and, um, so don't envision a ton there. Um, in terms of losing value, when you look at. In terms of losing value, when you look at your research, sort of, you know, development that is more ecologically friendly, actually having conserved land and, you know, beautiful property often enhances the value of a land. So I don't think this precludes us from, actually, I don't think it's, we don't know for sure, but I don't, I think it could equally enhance the value of the rest of the land versus decrease it. We did look into, and I can pull it up quickly, what the value is talking with the township. So according to the township assessor and planner, there are only 11 lot splits permitted on the land. So it's not gonna, you know, I know people have talked about affordable housing and such, that it's not going to be a, you know, a viable candidate for that. And I think it was about 2.62 million, if I recall correctly, for the rest of the land. So so I agree. I don't, I don't think we do know what we want to do with the the land that's not in the ravine, but the land that's in that ravine is really precious land. I mean, there's a chestnut tree and they're wetlands. And so I I do support conserving it. I think one of our commenters talked about, I mean, our natural resources do drive our tourism account economy. And I think protecting valuable land, which is dwindling, you know, year by year, is a gift this council can give to future generations and to the planet. I mean, the just, you know, keeping the wetlands, you know, serving as the lungs that, you know, their function and have having habitat for endangered species. So I think we can do both. I think development and conservation can work together. And I think this is an opportunity without us committing one way or another to what we use the rest of that land for, to just save sacred valuable land.
If I may, I would like to just kind of jump on when you're talking about conservation and development and working hand in hand. Just talking to a lot of people in the township and even on our hike that we had the other day. There's private property around that area that I think will be very valuable. If that becomes a park that people want to, you know, take advantage of, living next to that would be pretty amazing to be able to walk those trails. If there's developments that happen around that area, but we're protecting something that we can protect. The idea, if you look at, it was in our packet, talking about some needs in our community as far as our parks and rec needs. We need a soccer field and we need an extra football field and we really would love a community center someday. And those are things that could still happen at that property while conserving the most precious part of that property in a way that will never be developed, but still have that park space available. Because it's hard to come by when it comes to needing an extra soccer field in our area and needing an extra ball field in our area. Like, these are things, when my kids were growing up, we used to, all of our baseball games were in Hamilton. There's just a need for some, you know, of that type of thing in our area. And I just want to keep a hold of that public land that we need someday. But also conserving, again, that most precious part of that property. That's just my thoughts.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here Wednesday. Kind of the thing that's popping out is I was kind of disappointed that the one thing taken out was that we wouldn't get a yearly report or an update. You know, I thought that was, you know, just a friendly thing to say, hey, this is what we've done. When maybe we've gotten some grantors, this is what we're going to do here. Or, I mean, we've gotten some grant money, this is what we're going to do here. Was there a reason why that was taken out that was a concern or?
Yeah, I think, you know, what I heard from the O D C is, well, two things. One, there's not a, yeah, dedicated like funding source where like there's something to necessarily report on each year as far as like, like certain steps that they're they're taking. And they just, they're fine, they're going to be still every year evaluating this property and and kind of seeing, you know, providing a status update to the city, but they just didn't feel like that that needed to be in an actual easement to do that.
So when they do a project, you know, if they get grant money or they get a donation and they do a project, we will be made aware.
Yeah, they would come to us.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, Gregor, it was, it was keeping it out of the ease, not putting sort of a administrative thing into an easement language, was my understanding, not as a lawyer, but.
Yeah.
Just one last comment. Councilmember Anderson made the mention about the million dollars that had been committed by previous council for parks and public works. That amount actually is less than that amount now. We have taken $384,000 for the new playground out of that million dollars as well as $80,000 for the bathrooms over at Baldhead, which are underway, as well as approximately $200,000 for the stairs, as well as the platform up at the top. So that money is going to be coming off of that amount. So that amount is less than a million dollars. So we're beginning to, we've used that money.
I will say that, I mean, that is a decision, I think, that those, right now, those funds are, and you'll see this on your order, are going to show as restricted still at a million dollars. But yes, at the point that, you know, you as a council want to reduce that that one million dollar kind of earmarker restricted fund line item for parks and rec, we can do that and adjust that amount. I had a discussion with Plant Moran about that as we're going into the audit. Given that we had, you know, we were expecting to, you know, because of some capital projects have a general fund deficit for last fiscal year, instead, instead of having a deficit, we're looking at a surplus. Given the capital project we did with the playground and we still had a surplus, they're like, you know, do you really have a need to to adjust that? Ultimately, we discussed that it's a council decision, a policy decision. And if you want to, you know, that on a future workshop to discuss, we certainly can do that.
I would also, if I may, I'd like to rein in this conversation a little bit. We're not talking about maintenance on the trails. We're talking about the airport easement, you know, the easement on the carpet. And it's got, it's a separate issue from who's going to maintain any trails or whatever and the expenses related to that.
No, fair point. But to go back, we have not, we have not taken money out of that fund yet. So we might decide to do that, but we have not spent any of that one million dollars and that hasn't come before council, right? Okay.
How much money? I just want some clarity on this, too, because I've heard, you know, you hear lots of things on these streets. But I just want to know, how much money has the city spent so far in evaluating? I know that we've got some costs with lawyer fees helping us with the kind. But besides that, which I can kind of guesstimate probably isn't a whole lot. But what, how much money has the city spent so far towards the airport property?
I mean, I would say, aside from, you know, my time and some of Scott's time, you know, talking with you earlier this year and helping somewhat with the middle school, you know, cleanup projects. Otherwise, all the invasive work that's happened so far and the work towards, you know, getting the approval from the township for trails and preparing the conservation easement and the survey of the property, all of that has come out of the donor monies that they provided. And that was, you know, you as a council approved, you know, O D C said, hey, we need half upfront to start working on, you know, this this proposal. And that was $60,000 and that's been covering that cost.
Okay, good. So so other than administrative
Yep.
time. But I know you spend a lot of time on a lot of other things, too. But I know this isn't the only thing you're working on. But other than that, we haven't spent any money at all.
And as you mentioned, you know, there's been some legal review time this month that we'll get bills worked out in the month.
Anything else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Well, you need to make a motion.
Oh, didn't know.
We need a motion.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I didn't realize we hadn't gotten to that motion yet. I apologize. It is on page 77 in your packet.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the conservation easement between the city of Sagatuck and O D C Network.
I'll second.
Well, since we had a lengthy discussion, I think we can take a roll call vote at this time.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. All right. Thanks, everybody. All right, we are moving on to item 16 C, the Development Due Diligence Agreement with Sagatuck Township for the old landfill property. It's on page 92. And Ryan, I'll let you set that up one more time for us.
Yeah, sure, Mayor. So we reviewed this with you at your workshop meeting on the ninth and discussed that the township is interested in entering into a due diligence agreement with the city to really evaluate the old landfill property out near 196. There's a couple of parcels out there that encompass the landfill property. One is entirely owned by the city, the other is jointly owned by both the city and Sagatuck Township. That was after some title work that the township did. So the township is asking us to enter into a six-month due diligence agreement where during that period of time, you know, we wouldn't be able to try to sell the property or engage with others who might be interested in doing something with the property. During that period of due diligence, the township may conduct some surveys, inspections, investigations, tests, environmental assessments, things that would evaluate the property for parks and recreation type uses. We discussed at your workshop meeting that there's interest in cross-country trails being installed on the airport property. And so there's due diligence that needs to occur to take a look at, you know, is there still methane coming out of the vents out there? How do we install or how do they install trails that, you know, don't impact the landfill cap and make sure that the responsibilities that that we had in closing a landfill are maintained? Taking a look at, you know, whether or not there's anybody else that would be in that previous chain of liability. All of these costs are going to be paid for by the township. They're just asking us to agree to kind of enter into this period to allow them to do that work. And then at the end of it, you know, they'll evaluate, hey, are they interested in a long-term lease or potential purchase of the property? And then come back to us at that time and either make an offer or have some further discussions.
All right. So I'm going to do this first. May I have a motion before we start a discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Development Due Diligence Agreement with Sagatuck Township for the old landfill property.
I'll second.
Great. All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the only thing I would suggest is that we set up a time for council members and interested public to go out and view the land because it's pretty interesting. I've been out there with Scott Herbert several times to just walk the property. Spent quite a bit of time as a kid out there when it was a dump, too. So I did, I shot rats out there, yeah, when I was a kid. So anyway, long story short, I think it's important for council members as well as the public that are interested to go out there and actually see the property itself to really understand what it is. It's an interesting piece of property, so.
Any other discussion?
Well, it's a little hiding place for me once in a while, too. But I, we talked about this a while back and I was all for it from the very, from the, from the get-go. I think it's a great idea. It's, you know, property we're not using and they like it. While we're having this conversation, real quick, I know it's kind of related, kind of not. You know, they've always let us have that corner where that Sagatuck sign is. Are we working on rebuilding that? It's always been an agreement we have them for the Holland, Holland entrance. Are we working on rebuilding that sign?
So, yeah, so as we recall, we kind of discussed at a workshop meeting several, it's been a little while now that, that, you know, do you want to move forward with, you know, either replacing the signage is, or do you want to have kind of a broader discussion about branding and signage overall before we already move forward with replacing it? So I haven't been able to get any, you know, proposals together from anybody to, you know, look at branding and signage since that time.
Do we still have that agreement with them, though, that we can put a sign back there?
There, well, there's not actually a formal agreement that, yeah, we looked and worked through that, but there's not, yeah, so.
So that would have to be brought to.
Something we'll definitely talk about in the future, for sure. Yeah, for sure. Um, all right. Any other questions about the motion? Yeah, I'm just excited that we're going, we're moving forward with this. Six-month due diligence is the first step. And I'm looking forward to, hopefully, this being cross-country home track for our award-winning cross-country team that just won its 10th. The men's team, I know, just won, I believe, their 10th regional championship in the last, like, 13 years. Pretty amazing cross-country runners and they deserve to have a home track, if you will, a home trail. So that would be fantastic. So any other discussion? Roll call? All right.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes. Okay, now we will move on to, so correspondence, we did have a letter in there from John Thomas. We can talk about that at another time. It's in your packet. Feel free to read through that.
I'd like to see that on the workshop.
Sure, yeah. And then there is that board vacancy for the planning commission. So make sure if there's anybody that you know of that would like to be on planning commission, we do need a new person from town to fill that role. So now we will go on to public comment on anything you'd like to talk about. So anybody in the room that would like to speak?
Peterson, 742 Sagatuck, Pleasant Street, Madam Mayor, council members. Going back on to the conservation easement, using the wrong terminology, what I was looking at was, I thought we were continuing to talk about the proposal that was found that the the donor is going to come forward and fully fund the project, which was develop trails, create a trailhead, create a parking lot, combat invasive and restore habitat and potentially. But what I'm hearing then is all of this, the only thing that this did was the conservation easement over a portion of the property, which was believed to be at $20,000 from the amount of money that they gave. So then I'm assuming then that there's another contract with the O D C that was separate from this that still, they'll still be obligated with the money from the funder, the donor, to develop the trails and signage, create a trailhead, create a parking area and combat the invasive. They would not be not obligated to go for that. That'll still happen. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ken Butler, on behalf of the Sagatuck Parks and Rec, thank you very much. I, as I, I believe you hit, you at one time did a phase one on the landfill property. Could I stop by and pick up a copy of that? So we won't have to, at least we'll have that as our starting point. And then as we get the reports in, we'll be forwarding them to Ryan. So yes, I'm waiting to find out about those, the methane from those old pipes. And as soon as I know, you will, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Jolie Anadi, 712 Alligan. I've always felt that anybody sitting on the city council or high-profile employees should actually be held to a higher ethical standard than just the average man on the street. Now, I know you don't like to deal in the theoretical, but I'm going to throw some, I ask for your indulgence. What if we had perhaps a member of the city council go to a public event? Go on the park, holidays, Fourth of July, whatever, and gets obnoxiously drunk that the police had to intercede? And then his family, the family had to take them home. Well, therefore, what's been done? The persons embarrassed themselves, humiliated their family and embarrassed the city. Now, with what's going on with past city managers and the criminal elements sitting on the city council, I think we've embarrassed, been embarrassed enough. With a strong ethics policy, this person might have to resign. But without one, nothing's happened. If we had a strong ethics policy, we might not be paying the former city manager six figures. And we wouldn't be going through this constant embarrassment. Now, there's a couple of sayings that come to mind. You're often judged by the company you keep. So the next time some of the members of the council are strolling arm in arm with the criminal element of the community and discussing events that really don't discuss, really don't, shouldn't be involved in, you might think that, you know, when you lay down with dogs, you can get fleas. So why don't we just leave it at that and you have to give some thought of how business is done in this community and how people view us. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else in the audience?
John Vanderbeek, Riverwood Council. Thank you, guys, for having the bravery and leadership of moving forward with progress. It's really one of my proudest moments watching you guys vote today. I first pitched the idea of using the airport property for public good and conservation to Mayor Becken. Started drawing up ideas for the six, five or six years ago. But Mayor Becken liked it a lot, too. Back then, it just wasn't figured out that much. So years and years in the making from community members and municipalities and township support and township partnership with, with, with the city. This is wonderful to see and thank you for your time doing what you guys do. It's kind of a thankless job sometimes, but I thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else in the audience?
Mark Plungle in the city. I have here an application for the boards and commissions from basically our website. On this application, you ask for your experience. You ask for a resume. Yeah, and basically, it's asking, you know, your talents. Yet, I'm concerned by the comments made over the special meeting where, on the 17th of this month, where, like, Councilman Baldwin said that it was an easy choice because five of the six candidates were against our major programs. They had different ideas. Basically, if you have a different idea, you can't apply for the city jobs or the councils or the boards. And that's a very clear concept that was put across. You know, we're in the application that says that you have to have your ideas. We want to know, know your thoughts. We want your experience and the talent you bring. The other concern I have is Councilman Anderson went on to say, I picked that person because they were my friend. And that's really not fair when you think of it, because we're still looking, you know, at this application. It doesn't say list your friends. I mean, when we're talking our way through that, and you want to figure out, you know, what's going on here. Well, I apply for a lot of these positions on the boards and councils. I'm zero for 10. Zero for 10. Well, when you sit here and say that you don't think like me, so you can't serve, where you say, you're not my friend, I want to choose my friends on this thing. And then when I look at these councils and these committees, we're packing with your friends. And the people that think like you, there's no room for discussion. There's a lot of dirty looks if somebody brings up different ideas. I really think you need to sit down and take another look at the ethics in this process. And it's also a violation of civil rights. Because people who have different ideas have to have a chance to be part of this process. You want to be my way, or the highway process doesn't help. You need to engage the people, be able to dialogue with different ideas, and you need to be able to allow somebody else other than your friends to serve in the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Anyone else online with their hand raised? Okay, nothing there. Okay, we are on to council comments. Councilmember Clark?
No comments tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Muncy?
You know I want to wish everybody a happy Halloween. And trick-or-treating is between 5:00 and 8:00 PM here in Douglas and Sagatuck. You can check Bertie Holly's site, Sagusville, to see all the times for the local neighborhood. So, get that candy out there. And I just want to, you know, there's a, wanted to share, I shared online as well, this election update, and let everybody know that when you're looking at your ballots, due to a late filing, the candidates for the Sagatuck School Board, they weren't included on the ballot. You have to write them in. There's five of them. And there's only five of them, running for five positions, not as contentious as city council. But, but don't forget to jot these names down. Frank Morrow, Lisa Greenwood, James J. Woods III, Mary Ely, and Amanda Frank. But, but make sure that you write in those. If you don't write them, then they don't automatically get in. So, put some names down in that spot as well. And also, good luck to all of my fellow candidates that I enjoy serving. We certainly don't agree on a lot of things. And, but I enjoy serving. I enjoy serving with lots of different people in our community. And I wish everybody the best of luck through our next election. And I know all of us sitting at this table can't wait till next Tuesday is over.
Thanks, Gregory. Go ahead, Councilmember Dean.
I'd like to share the mayor's condolences to the family of Bill Hess. I enjoyed working with him on the historic markers that we see around town. I'm also proud to follow in the tradition of Sagatuck's past leaders, like Bill, who voted in 2008 to conserve Talmadge Woods and its wonderful Crowsnest Trail, with my vote tonight to conserve the old growth forest on the eastern edge of the old property. This is one of the more rewarding elements of public service. So, I'm very happy to be here tonight for this historic bit of conservation. Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin?
I did want to thank the council and the public for their support with the airport property, with finding the donors, with getting it, pulling it all the way across the finish line. It took a lot of people, a lot of dedicated effort. And I'm very gratified, appreciate everyone here who voted in the affirmative, and am very grateful. Landfill, getting that done to where we can get some runners out there. It's such a wonderful use for the property. I think some of these things just kind of sat stale on the books because it does take, you know, it takes a lot of, it takes work. It takes the ability to sit there and take the, you know, relentless criticism for wanting to just do the, what I would say is the right thing for the city. And sometimes, that wears on you, but this is gratifying. I appreciate it. And I thank everybody for participating.
All right, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning Bill Hess. I've gotten to know Bill, or had gotten to know Bill quite well over the past few years, and happened to see his significant other, Mike, at church yesterday with his brother and sister. And it was interesting because if you read Bill's obituary, it mentioned that Mike and Bill were partners for 46 years. And I said, that's a long time. He said, Russ, we were never married because Bill said, just because you can get married doesn't mean you have to, or you should. And I just really appreciate Mike, appreciate Bill's dedication to this community, his interest in doing the right thing. I have, have not met a more in, I don't even know what the word is, person who cared about this community and had a lot of experience with city council elections, and also was full of integrity. I miss him. I really do. I miss him. Also, too, on the airport property, I want to make sure that it's understood that I've not opposed to trails. What I was concerned about and continue to be concerned about is a city asset, which is now going to be tied up in perpetuity, which I believe is going to cost the city some money that we just don't know what that's going to look like. And I want to congratulate Erin Wilkinson and her team in the City of Douglas for a wonderful parade. I had the pleasure of judging costumes on behalf of the Sagatuck Douglas History Center, along with Mayor Kathy North, Township Trustee Stacy Aldrich, and Eric, no, Eric Galonic, the executive director. I can't tell you how, if you haven't seen the costumes, people go to the ti, I mean, I was talking with Superintendent Mark Niedlinger at the gate, and I'm like, where do people find the time to do these costumes? I mean, really, go online and take a look. It is amazing, the work and effort and thought that go into that. And what, just a wonderful event. And for those of you that don't know, that parade actually started in Sagatuck a number of years ago, and then moved to Douglas, and we still have the Pet and Kids Parade. So, there's a history there. Also, too, lastly, in honor of Halloween, I recently waded into the scary zone at Facebook. Because of what I read, I once again asked this council to revisit the city's ethics policy, or at least, the very least, create a city policy regarding social media guidance for city elected officials, appointed officials, and city employees. I think that's something we absolutely need to be up to speed on. Social media is, as we know, the communication channel for a lot of folks in this community. I work for a large organization, which I just went through compliance training, and that's one of the things we are told to focus on. Social media, we have very specific rules about what we can and can't do as employees. I think the city is behind the times on this, and we should get up to speed on it.
All right, Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you to John for all your, you know, efforts over the years on getting that property conserved. Appreciate that. And to Ken for his dogged pursuit of the running trails. I think both of those are great gifts to our community, and I know you've invested a lot of time. Granicus is up, that's awesome. Thanks to city staff for that. I look forward to looking at the new short-term rental section on the website. And then I just want to, sort of all the talk about criminality without just kind of coming with no evidence or proof is just, it just breaks my heart. And social media and just reading some of the vitriol breaks my heart. We are neighbors. And I wish people would learn to understand the truth and facts before they make accusations. And I actually didn't describe Joe as my friend. And fortunately, the Holland Sentinel quoted me on what I said about Joe. I did say that people who know me know my high regard for him. And they didn't need to talk to me to know he had my support. I worked with him on the short term rental, so that was a quote. I tried, another quote, I tried to get Joe to run for city council. A year ago, I worked with him on the short-term rental task force. He is one of the most thoughtful, fair, analytical, down-to-earth people. I've learned from him. He's helped me understand issues or parts of issues in ways I hadn't before. There are lots of ways for people to be qualified for, you know, the council appointment, or for, you know, our new senator, or any elected office, and in this case, an appointed for a term. And if we all viewed and valued the same qualifications, we wouldn't have the need to have elections because we would all agree. I think people who are voting for the one presidential candidate think that he's the most qualified, and those voting for the other candidate thinks that she are the most qualified. It doesn't mean, I mean, it's just what people think. So, I, I hope we can just kind of dial it down a little bit. And I hope after the election, the city can take a deep breath. I think this council has overall a really productive relationship. I actually looked at, people say how divisive we are. Actually, we're, we're almost, all of our votes are almost either seven, nothing, six to one. Short-term rental caps is definitely the difference. But all the other short-term rentals, Russ, you weren't at that meeting when we passed the other ordinances, six to nothing. So, I think if we could build on the spirit we have to respect one another online, offline, in this room, that would be awesome.
Well said. I would love a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.